I call the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting to order at six oh one P M. Ms. Pinyard, will you please call roll?
Chair Heberline.
Here.
Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Andrew Carr.
Here.
Olive Gallagher. Cameron Mesba. Catherine Neal. Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next thing up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to citizens' input, this is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now.
I currently have no attendees on Zoom.
All right. That takes care of that. Moving on to the administrative matters, consideration of the May tenth minutes. The May tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes were previously distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
None.
Seeing and hearing none, the minutes are approved as distributed. All right, up next, we go into our work session. It looks like Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis with Ms. Rybold is up.
Thank you, Chair Heberline. I will just do a quick introduction and try not to hopefully steal any thunder that might be in Ms. Rybold's presentation. But I thought it might be nice just to do a quick introduction for those newer to the commission or just who haven't been thinking about it since ten years ago. The city's last housing needs analysis was done and completed in twenty thirteen. That has been a guiding document for the city for since that time in terms of our housing growth and projects that we've been leading around housing. So with that, we have implemented things like the Town Center Plan. We have gone after urban reserve area out in Frog Pond East and South. I've been working to plan that area among other efforts, which I'm sure the team will talk a little bit about. So about a decade is about the amount of time you would start thinking about doing another housing needs analysis or once you adopt all the strategies and policies and recommendations from the first one, which is where we're at. We it also aligns with some state mandates. As you all are aware, we've had several state mandates come down around housing, which the team will outline the requirements of that within this work. So this is also kind of the timeline for this is also built into when those mandates would require us to do this work. So with that, I'm not going to talk in detail about the analysis or the work that might follow it, but just want to introduce it and say that it's timely for the city regardless of the mandates. It's also timely because of the state mandates, and we're excited to look at this and look at the work we have done, what that means for our housing needs, housing supply, and what might come out of this work. So with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Rybold.
All right, thank you. My name is Kim Rybold. I am Senior Planner here with the City of Wilsonville. Thank you, Chair Heberline, and members of the Planning Commission for, you know, hopefully being excited to dive into this work that will be going on over the course of the next couple of years. Before I turn it over to our consultant to give you more of the details of the process and how we'll be moving forward, I just want to add to what Miranda has talked about in terms of some of the key work that we've done that really helps set the stage for this project. Since twenty fourteen, when we did the last housing needs analysis, we've had a couple of key master planning efforts come online, both with the adoption of the Frog Pond West Master Plan, which has been an area of focused growth for residential development in the city. And then the work that we've been doing recently with Frog Pond East and South and that master plan that was recently adopted. Back in twenty nineteen, we also adopted the Town Center Plan. So that is one way that we're looking at opportunities for new residential growth in the city within the center and the core and looking at infill opportunities. So all three of these master plans will play a really pivotal role in how we are assessing our housing needs and our housing capacity moving forward over the planning horizon of the next twenty years. One other planning effort that I would highlight that is really important for this work is the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan that we adopted in twenty twenty. I know some of the planning commissioners that are here before us tonight were here when we worked on that, but not everybody was. And so I'll just try to highlight a couple of things that I think will be important to keep in mind as we do this work. The project did a similar type of abbreviated market analysis that looks at a lot of the same data that we'll be looking at in this project. That was pulled from a larger county, Plaquemines Countywide effort that was done. So this is really interesting, looking at where we were in twenty nineteen and just seeing what has changed in the past four years. I think that will be really helpful context for us. But a big outcome of that planning effort was to develop a housing plan and a housing strategy. Before then, we really never had a specific policy document guiding our housing work. We had the comprehensive plan policies that we've adopted. But this document really got into more discrete efforts that the city could undertake in furtherance of equitable housing. And as you'll hear in tonight's presentation, one of the key outcomes of this project will be a document called a Housing Production Strategy. And that is a document that's required by the state mandates that we have for this work. But it also provides an opportunity for us to check in on the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and the strategies, particularly some of the higher priority strategies that we've been working on since adoption of that plan about three years ago, which we've actually been doing a lot, which is pretty exciting. So we can take stock of what we've done, what we still need to do, and I think this strategy will be a really important opportunity as we kind of set our course forward in the housing work we do in the next handful of years. So with that, I think that's kind of some key policy grounding that we have. I would like to introduce Beth Goodman with Echo Northwest. She is the primary consultant, her and her team, that will be leading this work as we move forward over the course of a few phases of work, which we've gotten, we got into a little bit in the staff report and we'll explain in the presentation as well. And so she will get into some initial, some very initial findings from some of the technical work that we've started doing, as well as present a framework for how we will be moving forward and in particular, how we will be integrating public engagement into the project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Beth to share her screen and go through the slideshow.
Thank you very much, Kim. I appreciate the introduction and I'm very glad to be here with you this evening. Can you hear me okay there?
Yep.
Okay. So as I go through my presentation, will somebody there help facilitate in the room and stop me when you've got questions? I think that's the easiest way to do this.
Sure. If so, if somebody has a question, feel free. I think we can answer some questions in the course of the presentation. If there's something you see on the screen that you're just curious about, we will also have an opportunity at the end of the presentation to talk more. So feel free to interject and then Beth will make sure to stop you.
Okay, thank you so much. So as Kim mentioned, what we're building on is everything we've done before. So we are in the end in the housing needs capacity analysis. We're trying to answer the question, how much growth is Wilsonville looking for in looking towards having in the next twenty years? Where do you have buildable land? You know that a lot of that already and we'll be showing that a lot this evening. Answering the question, do you have enough buildable land to accommodate that expected growth? We don't have that answer this evening. That's something that'll come a little bit later in the project. And then what I think is the more interesting part is looking at what policies are needed to meet the housing needs in Wilsonville as part of your housing production strategy. So that can be a range of things from changes to regulatory policies, programs or actions that support development of new housing or preservation of existing housing, especially housing that's a little more affordable, actions to address houselessness or homelessness, a whole range of things. And I think we will be starting with your equitable housing plan and looking at what you've accomplished through that and through other plans, other work, and building from that. So looking for what's still not done and then what could be done. And when I ask what could be done, I mean what could be done in the context of what the city wants to do. So in other words, the community preferences, decision maker preferences, those kind of things that match up to your housing need. So that's where we're going over the next about two years. Pardon me. The parts of the project in dark blue, the Housing Needs Capacity Analysis, that's the technical report. We've got a draft of that and staff have reviewed the draft of that and given us some comments on it. We will be returning to the Housing Needs Capacity Analysis in the third phase of the project, which I'll explain the phases in a few moments. But a lot of that work is done, at least initially. And the, so what does this mean, parts of that work and what are the implications of that? That's really the pieces that are remaining. That feeds into your housing production strategy, which, as I said, looks at affordability, housing needs for different demographic groups, infrastructure needed to support housing development, what your your funding options are to pay for programs that support housing development. That will be a six-year action plan that the city will be executing on over the next six years after it's adopted. And at the end of that action plan, at the end of that period, that's when the city would do its next housing needs capacity analysis and then a new housing production strategy. So the housing production strategy may result in things like maybe there's some zoning code changes or even changes to zoning designations potentially. Maybe there's some new program or policy looking at something like a property tax exemption or looking at urban renewal, all kinds of other things. If there's another round of the Metro Housing Bond, looking at that. There are a range of different things that could come out of this, and we'll be discussing those options in the project, starting a little bit later in the project. So I mentioned that we've got three phases to this project. Phase one, we've been working on since February, and that's completing the partial housing needs capacity analysis. That involved developing the draft buildable lands inventory, gathering a lot of housing and demographic data, and starting the analysis of land needs, how much land will be needed. We also developed the outreach plan, which we'll talk about a little bit later here, and we had one meeting with your D E I committee. Phase two is going to be occurring between July and December. It may end before this December. It really depends on when phase three starts, and I'll talk about that in a few moments. But that's really about going to the community and talking some about what we're seeing in the housing needs capacity analysis and asking questions about, does this, you know, does this sound like, does this ring true to you essentially? What are your housing needs? How can, what are some things that can be done to better meet your housing needs? Understanding in a more nuanced way, different housing needs of different communities. So this will be a post to Let's Talk Wilsonville with a survey. It will be your annual block party. And I'm sure there will be some fun posted exercise or dot exercise where people get to weigh in on some different ideas. In November, we're looking at the rent burden meeting, and in that, we'll have an opportunity to ask a little more nuanced questions or different questions, especially for renter households in Wilsonville who are having trouble paying for their housing. We may have an additional event. I think that's going to depend on timing for phase two and phase three and if it makes sense to do that event as part of phase two. So phase three is finalizing the housing needs capacity analysis and developing the housing production strategy. When it starts is going to be based on the award of the D L C D grant and when they get their consultants, which presumably will be us, on board. It's not clear to me that that's going to be before September. I'm hoping it's by early November, but we really don't have control of that part of the timing. This phase is going to include a lot more outreach, so targeted outreach with our advisory committee and then some other outreach which we'll talk about more in a little while. Before I go on, are there any questions about the phasing or about the products?
Seeing none, go ahead, Beth.
Okay, thank you. So looking at your buildable lands inventory, so what we do is we start with all of the residential land inside of Wilsonville. And we look at Wilsonville and areas that are right outside of Wilsonville that are part of, essentially going to annex into Wilsonville at some point. So Frog Pond, part of that is still outside of your city limits, and that's primarily the important area for residential development. So we start with that area, which we're calling the Wilsonville Planning Area. We work with data such as data from Metro, the tax assessors data, your zoning and your comprehensive land data, a lot of information about development constraints such as steep slopes or floodplains. We look at all your land that is in residential areas or residential plan designations, and we classify it into vacant, partially vacant. So it has some development on it, but it could still easily be developed more without subdividing the parcel necessarily or without, without changes to zoning. We look at land that is developed and land that is in public ownership, where we think it's unlikely that ownership is going to change from public to something that would include housing. We identify and remove constraints, and then we do several verification steps. We've done verification using aerial photography, and then staff has helped us do verification. I expect if you have any comments through this, through this presentation or afterwards, or if our project advisory committee has any comments on it, that may result in some changes to the buildable lands inventory. So looking at this, I want to start with the development constraints so that you know what we're looking at. They are things like floodway and floodplain, your Title III stream floodway and floodplain protection areas, your significant resource overlay zone, areas where you have slopes greater than twenty-five percent, your habit conservation areas, which are Title thirteen, and then you've got some B P A easement areas. So each of these areas, even if they have vacant land in them, where you see a color on this map, that would be considered undevelopable, and we'll see this pattern come out in the next map in a few minutes. So please note that we've got things like your Frog Pond Master Plan area and active master plan area, your Town Center. We're also showing master plan area, your town center, we're also showing Vilebois on here, even though Vilebois is mostly built out at this point. We included these areas to the north. We know that they are mostly expected to go for industrial, but we wanted to make sure as we looked at buildable land that we weren't missing some buildable land in these areas to the north that are currently outside of the city limits. So we looked there as well. And this is what we found. Here's your buildable land that is residential neighborhood in Frog Pond. You can see you've got some vacant buildable land in town center, little tiny bits still left in Vilebois. And then you've got areas that are in your comprehensive plan designations that are outside of active master plans at this point, where you've got a little bit of vacant land. This spot here is some industrial land that is a TOD project site, which I suspect you already know all about, but otherwise we haven't looked at land that was zoned for industrial uses. What we also have not done is we haven't had a good look at redevelopment potential in town center. That's something we're going to do as part of phase three. It will be a discussion with staff and then a discussion with our stakeholders to identify some redevelopment potential in town center. So when we look at how much land we've got, what we see is overall, there's about 282 acres of unconstrained vacant and partially vacant buildable land inside the Wilsonville planning area. About 212 of that is in your active master planned areas and 70 acres are outside of the master planned areas. And again, this doesn't include redevelopment potential in town center. Before I go on, are there questions about this?
Seeing none.
So this is basically ringing true to you, is what I think I'm hearing. And as you look at the maps more and you have opportunities for that, certainly if you have comments, we'll want to have those comments. So some of the preliminary findings, and there's a lot more that we're not presenting here because we don't want to take all day to run through all of the data in the housing needs capacity analysis. As we're thinking about future housing needs, we're looking at the demographic factors that most affect housing demand. So our graphic to the right demonstrates those. So as you have changes in age, you also have changes in household composition. And then also, as you have changes in age, you typically have increases in income. So as a person goes through their life, when they're younger, they have lower income typically. They typically have higher income in their main working years, if you think about this as a household rather than an individual. And then income typically declines after retirement. So some of the big trends that I know you've heard about in many other projects are things like the aging of the millennials, how at this point in time, they're the main drivers of housing growth, followed by their younger cohort of Gen Z. These folks are in the process of forming households or will be forming households over this next 20 years. And the boomers are getting older. Some of them are making choices to downsize their housing. Some of them are trying to remain in housing and age in place. At some point, people have to make different choices about housing or they pass away. But at some point, housing may become difficult for them to continue caring for their housing. And so they may choose smaller units, they may go into some sort of assisted living facility, those kinds of things. So growing, growth in your Latin population. So what that's doing is as we see that population grow in Wilsonville and across metro area and the state, is you're seeing a little different demand. So you're seeing demand for housing that often can accommodate multi-generational households, Latinx households. The householders tend to be on average younger. They tend to have larger households, as I said, and also on average have lower income. So the kind of housing that they can afford is often less than the overall average. So as we're looking at growth in Latinx population, we'll be thinking about how those demographics play out and how those housing needs are a little different than your overall average. We'll be asking questions of your population, your, I'm so tripped up on the word, Latinx, I apologize, population as we go through this project. I think I've hit changes in household composition. What's interesting in Wilsonville, and this is true all across the state, is over the last decade or so, you've seen housing prices in Wilsonville in particular, more than double. You've seen rents go up by more than 50%. When you look at household income, not adjusted for inflation, none of this is adjusted for inflation, it's increased by about 21%. So I think those statistics right there tell a lot of the story of the housing market issues that we're having in Oregon, in the metro area, in Wilsonville. Income just aren't growing as fast as rents or housing sales prices. So you're having bigger problems with affordability. And then also we'll be looking at need for housing for people experiencing homelessness. That will be one part of the housing production strategy. So those are the big factors we'll be considering. Diving in a little bit on affordability, what we see is nearly 40% of your households are cost burdened, meaning they spend at least 30% of their gross income on housing costs and 19% are severely cost burdened, meaning they spend half or more of their gross income on housing costs. Like this, we said housing costs here instead of costs. I apologize for that typo. Housing costs are things like rent and selected utilities, like electricity or heating and water, or they are mortgage, interest, homeownership, what do you call it? Insurance, that is the word, and those same utilities. So what we're seeing over time is that overall housing cost burden is increasing and then what we also see is that cost burden in Wilsonville is higher than most of the other communities that we're comparing it to. Does that mean that Wilsonville is doing a worse job? No, I would say that it doesn't mean that Wilsonville is doing a worse job like some other cities in the region that have higher rates of cost burden. It's probable that you have more opportunities for people who have lower income to live in Wilsonville, even though they're cost burdened or severely cost burdened. So you see this in places like Gresham, which have higher rates of cost burden. And comparatively, places like Oswego and Westland and Sherwood, they have lower rates of cost burden, in part because there's fewer places that people can almost afford to live. So that's some of what we see going on. When you look at cost burden by tenure in Wilsonville, you see the same pattern that you see in other communities, which is that renter households are much more likely to be cost burdened than owner households. So about 52% of your renter households are cost burdened and 27% of them are severely cost burdened. So they're paying 50% or more of their income for housing costs. Those are the people who are very much likely in trouble. Before I go on, are there questions about any of this data?
Don't see any, go ahead.
So as we're thinking about developing housing in the future, it's helpful, I think, to think about housing that's affordable at different income levels. So what we have here is something that's showing us 100% of median family income for a family of four in the Portland region, that's $114,000 is that median household income. And so that household could afford, without being cost burdened, about rent or monthly housing costs of $2,860. That household could also afford a sales price up to about $370,000. That varies a little bit because of course every household has different thresholds for what they can afford based on their credit, what the term is of the loan, how much they put down, et cetera, et cetera. So when we look at your monthly housing costs, what we're seeing is the average monthly housing rent for multifamily housing is about $2,000 and that's including utilities. So that's requiring about $82,000 of income for a household of four. So clearly your households that are earning 100% of median family income can afford that without being cost burdened. At 80% of median family income, those households can afford that also. When you look below 80% of median family income, this is where households start to have more difficulty affording rent. So down at 50% of median family income, that's earning about $57,000 and being able to afford about $1,400 a month in rent. So there's a lot of people in this area, well, most people earning that certainly can't afford the $2,000 a month average rent. So as we're thinking about newly built housing that's for rental, any newly built housing is going to have rent above $2,000 a month, almost certainly, unless it's subsidized. So newly built housing that is affordable, typically is affordable above 80% of median family income and below 120% of median family income for rental housing. So that's newly built rental housing. Well, what about this need down here, somewhere below 80% of median family income? Well, it's 60% of median family income. That housing, it's typically built by nonprofit organizations or your housing authority and it's typically income restricted housing. So it's got state and federal funding in it. It's not housing that the private housing market builds. So the city's responses to supporting development of housing that's affordable at this lower income are probably going to be different than supporting housing that's affordable at this middle part of the income. And then most of your newly built single family housing and some of your newly built middle housing is going to be affordable above 120% of median family income. So your median sales price of $1,205,000 requires income of about $180,000 to afford or about 157% of median family income. And that's not necessarily, that probably newly built housing in many cases, maybe above that. In some cases, it could be below that also, depending on the size and the finishes of the housing. So these are things to keep in mind as we're thinking about building new housing in Wilsonville. So 25% of your households have income at that 125, sorry, 120% or above. So that's about 2,500 households. When we look below 50%, what we've got is about a third of your households have income below 50% of median family income and then a remaining 40% or so have low income or middle income. So between 50 and 80% and 80 and 120%. So you've got housing needs at all ends of the spectrum. When you think about what it is the city may need to do to support different housing, it's going to be different for what you do to support housing that's income restricted, what you do to support housing that's market rate and built by private developers, and then what you do to support housing that is affordable at the higher incomes. So we'll be taking all of that into consideration. Are there any questions about that?
Don't see any.
Okay. All right. So then the last data slide. So this is your housing forecast. This is based on information from Metro and it's a housing forecast for 2024 through 2044. We've got the Wilsonville city limits, where we know about 2,600 new units will be, areas currently outside of the city limits, and most of this is in Frog Pond areas. That's about almost 1,200 units or 1,200 households of new development. Pieces of that are probably annexing nearly as we speak. So looking at all of this together, we've got a planning area which is expected to grow by about 3,800 new households or new dwelling units over the next 20 years. And that's how much growth we'll be starting with. Part of phase three is looking at the different housing types we may be looking at for that growth. So how much might be single family detached, middle housing types, multifamily housing, those kinds of things. We'll be getting into that in phase three. We'll be paying a lot of attention to your existing active master plans to understand what it is that they're looking at and what they are geared towards building, because that'll have a lot of influence in what you see over the next 20 years. And whether you have enough land or not, that's, we're just insistent for that. That's an answer that we'll get as part of phase three of the project. So if there's any, no questions, I'll move on to discussing some of the public input opportunities.
We do have one question. Chair Huberline?
Yeah, so if I'm reading this slide correctly, we're expecting, is this 1.5% annual growth over that planning period? So if I remember the reading materials correctly, though, Wilsonville has averaged 3% annually. So how are we going to handle that disconnect in what Metro is forecasting and what our reality has been?
That's a good question. So on the one hand, as you, as any community gets larger, it starts to be hard to maintain a 3% growth rate. It's just a matter of mathematics and numbers. So growth rates tend to go down with growth of the community. So forecasting 3% growth would be an enormous amount of growth. So it's easier to grow 3% when you're 1,000 than when you're 10,000 households. So there's that. And then the other question, which I think is really what your question is, is what if we grow a lot faster than we're expected to grow? Well, you have to do this study again in six years. So you'll have a good sense in six years how much you've grown and you'll have a new forecast. And in six years, we'll also have a new methodology for doing a housing needs capacity analysis. That new methodology is going to be developed between now and 2025. And so we'll have an entire different way of doing this in six years from now. And six years isn't such a long period that you wouldn't be able to adjust within that. So, does that answer your question? You may well grow faster than expected.
Yeah, kinda. I mean, I guess you're identifying that it becomes harder and harder to grow at a 3% rate. But has that been taken into account with the Metro analysis or not?
I don't think Metro looks at it that way. Metro, this capacity estimate or this estimate of growth is based on capacity, I believe, at least partially in your buildable lands. And so if you think about the fact that part of the reason you've been able to grow faster in the past than you have now, it's that you've also been adding buildable land to your land base. I expect that may continue to play a role over the next 20 years outside of Frog Pond. But I don't have any more to say about that right now. I don't know if you've got enough land to accommodate this amount of growth.
One thing I'll add in too, because we had this exact conversation when we were looking at the numbers for the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan with the exact same observations. And I think what's challenging a bit with the forecasts and when they were looking at the newer forecast and we provided input, you know, the high level, how they do that forecast is they have a certain amount of growth and they're allocating the growth throughout the region. And, you know, we at a staff level provide input and note that, well, our observation is that this is greater and we think there's more potential than what you're allocating. I think the challenge that they have at the regional level is they have a certain set of numbers that they're signing out and it's, and I'm not a forecaster, so I don't say this from a super technical level, but they have to, they're moving around a finite piece of growth. And so if they're allocating it here, they're taking it away from somewhere else. And so there's a bit of give and take that comes with that forecasting. And so I think, you know, what we've done in prior work and probably will continue to note and document in the final work that we do here, is acknowledging that historical trend. trend. And I think that the nice thing about moving into this newer process and framework that we'll be moving into in six years' time is that there will be a different methodology. And I expect that maybe there could be some more realism to that in light of the fact that that methodology, part of what they have to do is recognize underproduction. And so I think that, you know, there is a bit of sort of having to stay the course with how the forecasts are done now, but it's a great point that in six years, we'll check in on this again and probably will say, yep, we outpaced it again, potentially. But I think it's a very good observation that we have acknowledged and tried our best to voice in the process.
Are we required to use the Metro analysis?
Yes. You are required to use the Metro analysis. That's one of the things that there's very little room on.
Bummer. Okay.
So one of the other things that I think will be different in the future is Metro's looking at land readiness, development readiness, whereas they hadn't been looking at it in the same way before. And Wilsonville has a history of, you know, getting land developed. So, you know, Frog Pond, you've planned that, you've seen development on that land, unlike, say, in the Damascus area, where development certainly did not happen as expected. In addition, as Kim mentioned, we'll be looking at underproduction, which basically Oregon as a whole has been underproducing a lot of units over the last decade and longer. So there'll be accounting for that, you know, catching up essentially that Oregon needs to do, and it needs to happen in the metro area. A lot of that has to be there. So it'll be really different in six years from now, I expect.
I think we have more questions.
It's not a question. It's more an observation from our discussions when we were doing Frog Pond and also when we were looking at affordable housing. Frog Pond, one of the observations was that developing that land is proving to be expensive, just the improvement is expensive. It's expensive land to get infrastructure to. I'm hoping that as we get into more future kind of methodologies on these things, we look at that, because we're dealing with the same issue when we look at the wastewater treatment plant. You know, the enlargement, all of a sudden increased the cost, and we were all kind of wondering why. Well, these are all the costs of growth. That's why when you get past a certain threshold, each contingent piece of land that you add is going to cost disproportionately more to urbanize. And therefore, we're going to have more and more trouble with affordability. We have heard people who are in the private development showing up and saying it costs so much for us just to buy the land and pay for the improvements, much less meet your affordability issues. So you're going to, if we don't really plan ahead, we are going to gentrify slowly, which means it's going to be expensive housing for everybody, and nobody who doesn't make 200% of medium income is going to be able to afford it here. And you don't need to go far, I mean, Lake Oswego is already that way. So that's the purpose of planning. And I think in our strategy, I'm hoping, we are going to look at those pieces of land that are affordable in developing, just improvement included, and say, these are the places where we need to be looking at affordable housing, so that we don't all of a sudden face with parcels and housing that cost a million dollars, and now we're trying to do something through grants or nonprofits or whatever to make it like a $200,000 house. This also brings this kind of, these things go in circular kind of motions. We had this conversation with the Old Town when we were doing planning for Old Town. Old Town residents showed up and said, we bought this cheap and we want to flip it, and what's wrong with us having this, in fact, they mentioned Lake Oswego Field. Well, that's the affordable housing. And yeah, if you buy it cheap and you put marble in it and so forth, pretty soon it's going to be $800,000. It's not affordable anymore. So those are the kinds of things I'm hoping to see in the strategies that we're going to come up with, and it was mentioned that we're going to look at the preservation of existing stock that would relate to some of these older units. That, we should do something to allow nonprofits to buy them. I don't have anything against people who like to fix houses, but we are competing with that. That's all.
And so just to set your expectation, I expect the actions in the housing production strategy to be looking at those issues. In the housing production strategy, we'll be talking about actions that the city will be executing on over the next six years. So we won't be, we won't be doing the actions in developing the strategy. We'll be developing the work plan for doing some of those actions. And some of those actions might be things that the city chooses to do very soon, and some of them may be things that come a little bit later. Does that make sense, Mr. Commissioner?
Yes. In fact, I would think that if we can get to it in six years, we are going very fast. This is planning and usually has a horizon of 20 years, in my experience.
Right. No, no. Time is urgent.
Commissioner Gallagher?
Yeah, I just have a small housekeeping question on, way back in the presentation, you referred to the Latina household? Was there a type of?
Latina?
Yeah, I mean, I've never seen that. Is that a derivative of the way we're using the word now?
Yes. So I would be happy to make a clarification, Commissioner Gallagher. This is more inclusive language that is more reflective of a non-binary gender spectrum. So it's intended to encompass all of the Latina population. Yep.
Commissioner Carr? So going back to the, yes. So with a six-year horizon, we know Frog Pond is going to be being built, right? So we're going to go, in my estimation, we're going to go way beyond 1.5% per year. So when we come back to this in six years, we could have a 5% growth or more because of the number of houses we're building in Frog Pond. Because we're, again, we're at a 10,000 level, and we may be building, I don't know, 600 or 700 houses in the next six years. So this information would help me better if it was graphically done over a 10-year horizon or 20-year horizon, because we know Frog Pond is going to start being built, and that's going to inflate the numbers early as we get towards that six-year horizon, is my, is the way I'm looking at this. Because we have all this buildable land, it's got master plans, people are getting it shovel-ready. So how do we take that into account? Because six years from now, we may be looking at this and going, wow, we really missed the 1.5%.
So if you built, if you actually saw 600 new units go in per year, and let us say that your capacity is equal to the forecast, which is not likely to be true, then you'd be in some trouble. That would be 3,600 new units by the time you're looking at redoing this work. But let's say that, you know, some years you certainly have 600, and some years you have more like 200. And so let's say that, you know, you saw a development of, I don't know, 2,000, 2,500 units. Then you're at a place where it's certainly very important at that point to be talking about new opportunities for development and planning for it. It seems likely to me a couple of things. One, we're probably going to have at least one economic cycle, which is another way of saying recession, between now and the next six years. I'm no economist, but it just seems plausible. So that'll mean a year or two of less building. And then two, I think your capacity may well be higher than this, especially as we look towards town center and some reasonable estimates for redevelopment potential there. So we can certainly bring this to you more on an annual basis or tell you, you know, every year we're looking at about 192 units, if this was completely linear. So providing it to you more, as you said, in a five or 10-year sort of increment for this number. And we can bring that kind of information forward to you so that you have that kind of information to work with. But whether or not, you know, if you completely built out Frog Pond in the next six years, then the city would be in something of a difficult position. But that seems less likely to me, in part because it seems likely that we'll have some down economic time in that period.
What are?
If you're waiting 10 or 15 years to do your housing capacity analysis again, then you'd certainly, I would say, that would be too long.
So if I may, Chair Huberline and Commissioners, I would only offer a couple more thoughts. One is, this was a major discussion point when we did the housing needs analysis 10 years ago, which was that we were growing faster than Metro's reported forecast, and that is part of the reason why we started doing our housing report, if you remember. So 10 years ago, we started the housing report and started tracking that information, well, maybe about eight years ago. Took us time to figure out what we were going to report in a housing report. And as you've seen it evolve over the years, we now have a pretty slick housing report, which you will actually receive a presentation on shortly. And so part of that was to help us to track. How are we developing? Where are we developing? What is the speed and growth at which that's happening? And what's the relationship between the growth that's forecasted by Metro and what we're seeing on the ground? How does that also relate to our land supply and capacity? And so one of the things that we've seen in that time is we've actually used our land more efficiently. So when we looked at the capacity last time and said, here's what the anticipated growth is for Metro, if we use historical trends, this is what it would look like, and here's the land capacity, and what does that mean in relationship to those two forecasted numbers? And so what we saw is that the land would probably be sufficient, and we'd probably have enough land if we were to grow at the percentage or the rate that Metro forecasted. But it would probably be tight, and that if we were to grow at the higher end, that we would likely need more land. And that's essentially what's happened, which is why we did the request for Frog Pond East and South, and we master-planned that area, concept planned that area in advance, assuming we would need and want to grow into that area, and have brought that acreage in now. But what we've also seen is that we've actually had some infill, we've had some opportunities we didn't necessarily anticipate, and we've used that land well and concisely and efficiently. And so we haven't actually absorbed the land at the rate that that report assumed, which are good things, right? So that allows you to actually have a higher forecasted growth number, and it doesn't matter as much because you're doing that within the same kind of capacity. So I think it is something that's important to track, which is why we have been tracking it, we will likely continue to track it. And now with the new state requirements, we'll be doing the housing needs analysis, housing capacity analysis every six years, instead of kind of at every comprehensive plan update, which is what it used to be in Oregon. I don't know if that helps add a little bit more context, but, you know, I think it is true also, as we grow, the 1% of our city is a lot more than it used to be. We have not been approving 600 units every year. So if that was the, you know, at 1.5%, if that's what we're looking at, that's not actually what we're doing. You know, in a year where we get some multifamily residential projects, then we might be closer to that number, but that's not the number that we're at at this point in time.
And Miranda, was the 2014 housing needs analysis and then your annual reports, we hypothesized back then that those could be useful in discussions with Metro about how much growth. Were they useful, and might you be using those kind of things again in the future as Metro continues its planning for future expansions or not?
Thank you. Good question. So we have annually, when we have produced it, we have shared it with Metro staff from their data research center, as well as their planning department, which I believe now is actually a unified department. But we have shared that information annually with them. I don't know that it has actually influenced their methodology. I also understand that that methodology, I believe, will be changing because of the new requirements of state law and the fact that we'll all be using the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis as a benchmark for some of what we will be doing. So I anticipate we will be tracking that process as Metro updates their model, trying to understand that as it will impact our next housing needs analysis.
Are there more questions on this?
I think we are ready to move on.
Okay. So then, moving on, our next steps, coming up here is engagement this summer and going into fall. So in Days Two, what we're looking at is engagement events that are going to present some of the preliminary results of this report, the HNC-A, and ask for feedback from participants about their unmet housing needs. So we will not be telling them all about buildable land and all about the forecasts and that kind of thing. We'll be presenting the results in a much more consumable way so that normal people can understand them. We'll have a post to Let's Talk Wilsonville with a survey that I believe we plan to have running from August through at least September, I think. We'll be your annual block party, being party animals with all the rest of your staff in August. And so we'll be talking to people, we'll have staff who are fluent in Spanish there to help us talk to people who are less fluent in English. And then in November, at your rent burden meeting, and that meeting will specifically focus on households that have, well, rent burden, so renter households who are cost burdened. And then we may well have an additional event that we need to discuss with staff. And our key stakeholders there are community members and people who need housing. So we're really looking at households that rent, especially low-income households, and people from underrepresented communities. So people who you hear from less, say, people with disabilities, people from your Latina community, other people of color, people experiencing houselessness or at risk of houselessness. We may hear some from those communities and other groups. So that's what's coming up in Phase Two. And then in Phase Three, what we're looking at is forming a project advisory committee that will be about stakeholders who are informed about housing development, and then also potentially some service providers who work in housing to represent lower-income households, your underrepresented communities, that kind of thing. And we may also have other community members invited there. That group is going to meet about five or six times. They'll talk some about the HNC-A so that they've got some background. And then most of that discussion will be about the housing production strategy, about what some of the actions are that the city has already done, some of the actions that the city could do, and, you know, matching those actions that the city could do with the housing needs in the community. And discussing which of these actions make the most sense and working through that. Some public events that'll be more, I think, in-person, I think we're looking at two additional public events. Interviews that'll focus mostly on people who are affected by affordability challenges. Those may be small group discussions, they may be discussions with Those may be small group discussions, they may be discussions with service providers. Depending on the scope of work for Phase Three, we may be able to do a Wilsonville Housing Conversations with residents, where it's essentially like a meeting in a box, where stakeholders go out and they talk to their neighbors, and their friends, and their family about some of the housing issues, and bring information back. And then, of course, meetings with the Planning Commission and the City Council. So, our, our key stakeholders again are community members, with a focus on underrepresented community members, making sure that we hear voices that we often don't hear. Affordable housing developers, market-rate housing developers, to make sure that some of the actions that we're talking about, that are focused on housing development, make sense. Service providers, to make sure that we're hearing about the underrepresented community members that we don't hear about otherwise. And then, of course, elected and appointed officials. So, are there any questions about the engagement plans, as they stand right now?
I don't see any right now.
So then, here are the discussion questions. Kim, do you want to?
Sure.
Work for these?
Sure. And so, I think this is just to get you thinking, if there's any additional feedback you have that you want us to take with us as we move forward in this project. The first being, if there are any comments or questions that you have about the draft engagement plan, and this was included as an attachment in your packet materials. And then, if there are any other questions that you have about the overall scope, direction, or timeline of the project as we move forward.
I think the thing I'm curious about, in terms of the public engagement, is, it seems to me that the information that you get from the public is very determined by the questions that you ask. And one of the things that I've observed over the years is that, if you are lucky enough to get the public engaged, you can also walk away from that interchange with really just a, either, an agreement with what we already know, but not necessarily finding out what we need to know. And so, I'm just making a suggestion, and I think the questions that we ask when we involve the public is just as important as the answers that we get.
Thank you.
And that's certainly something that we're thinking about a lot. How do we ask questions that get at some of the nuanced issues that we can't get from, from the data? We understand that there's issues, and we need to understand more nuance about those issues.
I would add, we've had, we've asked a lot of housing questions over the last few years, and so, we've been thinking about, okay, what, how do we build on what we've already asked, and get to the next level?
Is that something that you'd want any of our involvement in helping you?
Because when you're, when you're talking to people about money, income, and capabilities, you're getting into a very emotional, very personal area.
A lot of people are really not comfortable letting you know that they either are struggling, or that they're even thinking about it. So, it's, it's, I don't think it's as easy and as cut and dry as one would hope it would be. And so, I think that that's a very important area, and again, if I can contribute in any way, more than half of the time.
Thank you.
And we will be looking at the questions that were asked, as, as a part of some of the recent processes, and, you know, building on them, especially questions that, that worked well.
Yes. Yeah, just some thoughts. I really appreciate the comment just about, yeah, sensitivity around the conversations, and I even imagined, you know, just listening sessions or conversations at the library, or just, you know, something that starts a little bit more informational, but allows people to kind of talk through, yeah, whatever they feel comfortable doing. And then, my other thought was just about, yeah, are the, like, some of the tools and engagement strategies that I feel like were suggested, makes sense on, like, the audience that we want to reach, but then, some of them, I was like, are we, are we reaching the audience we're wanting to with, like, yeah, the Wilsonville, like, survey site? I don't know what our traditional, like, demographics are with, who responds to that survey, but I imagine it's, it's not who exactly we're trying to reach here. So, just thinking a little bit more about, like, yeah, if, if our audience is this, do our tools match that, to, to make sure we're reaching those folks? So, just some thoughts.
That's a great suggestion, and one of the things, one of the reasons that we, early on, met with the DEI Committee too, was we were trying to gather their input and ideas for how to reach a lot of those communities. And so, I think, you know, the survey is one piece, it's not the entirety of it, it's really kind of a kicking-off point. We do find that the, the annual block party that we have, that that event, really is a good broader draw, and I think, you know, we try to get people to sign up, but one thing we've also done too, it's a little more effort on our end to have, like, a paper copy available, but I think that's something we can consider as well, or, you know, thinking about how we're designing those interactive tools that we use at that event, and including the outputs we get from that, along with the survey data, because in, I think our observations based on, we know about the demographics, that you're probably correct in terms of who we're reaching. So, and we, you know, would like to use this as an opportunity to try to add some, you know, to be able to market the site further as well, because I think it benefits us as a community going forward too. So, thank you.
There are planning tools for sensitive, emotional kinds of questions and information we're trying to get, which gamifies the, the process, puts the participants in a, in a well-designed game that allows them to come up with strategies to deal with difficult problems, paying for housing, or whatever. And allows them to choose tools that shows either knowledge or preference for what kinds of assistance they would be willing to get. I don't know if anything like that has been tried in Wilsonville. I know big cities use them. You know, it would, it usually gives you insight into people, because they're not, it's not personalizing it, it's a game, somebody is in a rough problem that they're trying to solve, and this person is helping them solve it, so to speak. And it allows people to be much more creative, and shows their preferences for the kinds of strategies they would use.
Thank you. We'll, we'll take a look at that. I don't recall that we used anything quite as similar. I know with some of the Frog, I believe it was the Frog Pond East and South worked, and in some of the focus groups, I think you had some kind of situational type questions to get at, you know, getting people to kind of drill down into their preferences. I don't know that it was as much of a gamified situation though, but I think that's something we can look into.
This sometimes is used as tokens, you have this many tokens to pay for a resource, and you're short. So, you have to strategize how to, Monopoly is, comes to mind. But in that kind of a situation, then you can introduce strategies for borrowing, strategies for grants, strategies for rent subsidies, whatever, and see where people will go for meeting the challenge. Again, it doesn't make it personal, it's not, I'm going to get some assistance if there's sensitivity there, but there's a solution to this jam in this game I'm finding myself.
But most of the things that aren't in the way of people seeking out those aids is not preference, it's knowledge, it's awareness.
And if the city is looking for what policies and what buckets of resources would be more effective, this would show it, if a majority are going for some rent subsidy, that would indicate to the city that rent subsidy is probably a good place to start, because a lot of people seem to have a preference there, whatever the reason. It may be that it doesn't have a stigma, or whatever it is.
And I think one of the things that, that we'll need to keep in mind as we're talking about these issues is availability of funds. So, rent subsidies are very effective at addressing some of these issues, but how would Wilsonville pay for that? And so, we'll want to pay attention as we're, we're talking about these different strategies, to come up with something that is also fiscally plausible, I think.
But I, I think that what Commissioner Mesba was trying to get at is, is trying to find what the citizens would use, and, and then we can start designing our strategies to, to mirror that. And if that requires a different tact than the city would normally take, then, then that's what we want to understand, is, is where maybe we need to change to, to, to impact positively the people that we're trying to.
Okay.
I'm not seeing anything else, so Beth, I really appreciate this presentation. It's great to see this, and I'm excited to see how this progresses moving forward.
Yeah, I'm an engineer, and this is a wicked hard problem.
Uh huh.
Thank you all very much for your input.
Thank you.
Looks like next up, a timely addition to, to what we're talking about today, the Annual Housing Report.
Yes, thank you, Chair Heberline, Commissioners. I am very excited to introduce this for a few reasons. As you all recall, the Planning Division was short-staffed last year, we struggled with a lot of kind of transition, and also a lot of activity in the community, which is always a great thing. But one of the things that fell through was our Annual Housing Report. And so, hopefully, you all took a moment to peruse the Annual Housing Report, which is now live on the website. It actually reports out for both of the last two years. So, instead of just skipping over 2021 entirely, we reported it out, we're just reporting it out a little late. So, thank you for your patience and your understanding on that. And I'm excited to introduce Sarah Pearlman, she is our Assistant Planner, and most of you probably have not had an opportunity to meet her yet. This is her first presentation before you, so warm welcome to Sarah in meeting all of you. And I'm excited to have her, she's done an excellent job of pulling this together. I think it tells a story similar to what you just heard, so it's not the most uplifting story, but it is very well put-together informa, report of information about housing, and where we're headed with housing, and needing to have these difficult conversations. But it's a really good snapshot of what has occurred over the last couple of years, and what we see is coming next. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Sarah, thank you, and excited to hear the report.
Thank you so much, Miranda, and good evening, Chair Heberline and members of the Planning Commission. My name's Sarah Pearlman, I'm the Assistant Planner, and I'm very excited to share the 2021 and 2022 Annual Housing Report. Let's see if I can scroll. So, I just wanted to start with a short overview of some of the activity for 2021 and 2022. And we're just going to start with the permitted homes. So, 122 homes were permitted for construction in 2021. This chart here shows sort of a breakdown of the housing types that were permitted. In 2022, 47 homes were permitted for construction, all of which were single-family detached. The Development Review Board in 2021 approved five lots and 143 apartment units. I believe some of those five lots are also expected to house middle housing. And in 2022, 156 lots were approved for development, some of which are also expected to house middle housing. I also just wanted to point out while I'm on this chart, that it does point to sort of a cyclical trend, where fewer lots are approved when there's higher rates of construction. And so, as we're seeing more lots approved in the past few years, we'll likely see higher rates of construction following those. Just continuing on to some of the population growth trends, as was talked about in the last item. In 2021, the population grew by 5%, and in 2022, it even backed out a little bit more to nearly 1% additional population growth. You can also see the housing unit growth in this chart as well. In 2021, housing units grew by about a little over 1%, and in 2022, it was around 0.5%. And just to pause on this chart as well, you can kind of see the high population growth compared to some housing growth in 2021. Moving into the theme of this year's report, we decided to focus on housing variety as a uniting theme for Wilsonville's development landscape. Wilsonville's always been an innovative city, and the ongoing housing crisis and changes in state rulemaking are really requiring innovative responses. So, just as a quick refresher, House Bill 2001 really brought middle housing to the forefront of the minds of Oregonians. It's resulted in the allowance of middle housing, like townhouses and duplexes, so just like this duplex in Frog Pond, or these townhouses in Vilbois, and other types of middle housing, where only detached, single-family homes were historically allowed. The recently adopted Frog Pond East and South Master Plan, as I'm sure you're all very intimately aware, pushes this idea a bit further with an innovative framework for creating a residential area with a variety of housing choices, with plans for requiring housing mix, and using a form-based approach. And as I know you all know as well, Frog Pond represents the last of the land that was recently brought into the UGB. So, as this land is developed, infill will also become a major mode of development, and will likely call for different types of housing than what the city has seen in the past few years with greenfield, new development areas. The Town Center Plan is one example of how this shift is planned for, and centers mixed-use developments, ADU construction as well, has also increased in recent years, with currently 19 ADU developments across the city. We do also expect to see more ADUs that will add to that variety of housing. I'm just going to, ew, I think my map's got stuck. There we go. I was just going to briefly go over some of these maps. They show generally the locations and numbers of permitted homes, so this one looks at 2021, along with some high-level statistics around the mean lot size and average net density. You can see 2022 here in the purple, and because we did both years, we included a map for both together. These maps are interactive, which is sort of fun, so if you can, there's a link on the website, and it should be included in the packet as well, but you can expand them, zoom in theoretically, and click on individual points for more information. The heat map is also just sort of another fun way of to look at where development has been centered since 2015. So, as you can see, Vilbois still remains pretty hot in this map, with that peak of construction around 2016, but you can see that construction's starting to shift to Frog Pond as well. And finally, just a brief overview of approved development plans. You can see development approvals from before 2020 and before, in the blue icons, 2021 is in the white, and 2022 is in the orange. These are also sort of fun, you can zoom in on them, and click them for more information, and it links you to the website as well. Scrolling right along, we'll talk about some affordability and growth numbers next, and the affordability and growth trends from the past two years point to really the importance of a focus on housing variety throughout the city. So, in 2021, the median sales price of a home increased notably from around $480,000 in 2020 to nearly $640,000 in 2021. So, in this chart, you can see, yep, in this chart, you can see that estimated affordable home price as well, so the price that a household making the median income can afford if they're paying. if they're paying no more than 30% of their income to household expenses or to their mortgage. In 2021, a home costs 50% more than what a household making the median income can reasonably afford. And you can see this pretty steep jump. And then in 2022, that gap increased to 54%. Interestingly, the median price of a home decreased in 2022, but the estimated monthly payment increased. Got to scroll back up. There we go. So as you can sort of see in this chart, it'll be the second rung down. The, or yeah, the second rung down. In 2021, the monthly average payment, including the assumptions are sort of 20% down, 30-year mortgage, including estimated property taxes and interest rates. So while the median home price decreased in 2022, the estimated monthly payment actually went up to a little over $3,000 a month. This is likely related to the high increase in interest rates in 2022. The Federal Reserve Economic Data Source estimates about 5.3% compared to 2.9% in 2021. Income has continued to rise over the past two years, though in 2021, median income did not significantly increase while the median home price increased by about a third. This chart shows that notable difference between the increase in home price and the change in income in 2021, as well as the drop in home price and the change in income in 2022. And as I've sort of mentioned before, this chart doesn't really show that impact of interest rates. It's just really sort of the sticker price of the home. Turning to rent, the median rent price increased notably by about 16.4% in 2021 and again by a more modest but still notable 5.9% in 2022. In 2021, the median rent price exceeded what a household making the median income could afford paying 30% of their income to rent. You can see this in this chart with the actual median rent. So this first line in 2020 being a little bit lower than what was estimated as affordable to the household paying around 30% of their income. This relationship's inverted in 2021 with the actual rent being quite a bit higher than the affordable median rent. This and this trend really continues in 2022, but it really indicates the typical renting household in Wilsonville was not rent burdened in 2020. And this changed in 2021. Despite increasing income for both renters and homeowners, the trend continued in 2022. As you can see, sort of graphically, the median price in blue jumps above that estimated affordable price in green. And digging into the costs and rent burden a little bit deeper, there's sort of a lot of charts on this one, so we'll just go over it briefly. But in 2022, nearly eight out of 10 households across the city earning below $50,000 a year were considered cost-burdened and spending more than 30% of their income on housing. I think, as was mentioned in the last presentation, this trend is more pronounced in renting households with 85% earning under $50,000 a year being considered cost-burdened or rent-burdened. And hopefully you can see it on the screen because the charts are a little bit small. But the percent of households experiencing rent burden increased in 2021 to 2022. And this trend is replicated and more pronounced in renter households. Again, that percentage increasing in 2022. The other pretty important thing to note was that the city was included on the state's severely rent burden list in 2022 with 27.2% of the population spending more than 50% of their income on rent. And this is the first time that Wilsonville has been included on the list as a severely rent burdened city since the state began collecting that data. And perhaps more uplifting news, Wilsonville is already a city with variety in its housing stock. About 45% of the housing stock of Wilsonville's apartments and 44% about is detached, single-family homes, with townhouses making up the next largest portion. Though more cluster housing duplexes and ADUs are anticipated as we've seen more development in recent years. Moving into some comparisons, the report examines similar communities at a pretty high level. So I'll just go over the data briefly here. The median home price in cohort cities, so we looked at Lake Oswego, Oregon City, Sherwood, Tigard, Toallatin, and of course, Wilsonville. That median home price rose between 2021 and 2022, pretty much across the board. Again, across the board, cities have been experiencing higher rates of rent burden. And more cities in sort of similar conditions to Wilsonville surpassed that state threshold of more than 25% of the population spending more than 50% of their income on rent. And just backing back up to population, Wilsonville has experienced notable population growth compared to similar cities in both 2021 and 2022. It's consistently been one of the fastest-growing cities, if not the fastest-growing in certain years. And moving to the next chart, housing growth has also been pretty steady over the past few years as well. We've talked about this a bit in the last one, but since Metro's housing growth forecast in 2014, about 52% of the projected growth in housing units has been constructed. And with that greater focus on housing variety from middle housing in Frog Pond and mixed-use developments in Town Center and infill projects and ADUs throughout the city, Wilsonville is projected to surpass this projection before those 20 years conclude in 2034. As of 2022, checking in on that buildable lands inventory, 67% of residential land inventoried in 2014 has been dedicated to approved plans. And when that 2018 UGB expansion is considered with about an additional 275 acres, around 42% of the available residential land in the city has been dedicated. For some concluding thoughts, this year's housing report focuses on the state of housing during the peak and sort of the tapering periods of the COVID-19 pandemic. Ongoing conditions, some of which are related to the pandemic and some of which predate it, have impacted housing in Wilsonville and beyond in ways that are really just starting to unfold. At the same time, equitable housing has been a central goal to city council and to the city as a whole for nearly 10 years. Frog Pond East and South has been planned with an eye on growing housing variety and with that, increasing the opportunity for affordable homeownership, a major council goal. Infill projects in Town Center and beyond are expected in 2023 and into the future. And it's been a bumpy few years across Oregon and really across the world, but things are looking up. The city is really committed to continuing to work collaboratively with developers, residents, other partners, and community members to congeate your time and attention. And I look forward to any thoughts and questions.
I'll just say, great job. And I really appreciate, yeah, the interactive maps are definitely awesome. So thank you so much for sharing that. And yeah, I do think it's definitely eye-opening. I don't know, like personally, I'm like, I hear a lot about, yeah, housing crisis. And I know friends who want to buy houses and can't. And then it's just helpful to see like, yeah, where Wilsonville is at and all of that. And it is, it's disheartening, but I know we're trying our best and doing our best to do what we can. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, I also appreciate all the work and effort and planning that went into this and all of the research. I think it does paint a picture of why we're coming up with housing strategy. The rent one shocked me, I think, the most, that there was such a spike in 2021. I'm guessing that was landlords trying to recover from 2020. But it's still disheartening to hear some of the information. But hopefully, we as a city can plan for the future and come up with something to help our citizens.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Welcome. Nice to, nice to see you for the first time. So I'll be easy on you this time. So we'll wait for the next time. I guess the only thing that I would say, being a data nerd, if there was the ability to have a longer time horizon for some of the data, you know, a lot of it was being shown for a five-year, six-year period, which you don't necessarily pick up the cyclical nature of the housing environment. So it'd be nice to be able to see that going forward just because I like data. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that. And I know a lot of the data that we have begins in 2014, so it will be interesting next year, in two years, to see that like 10-year time horizon. I think we can definitely figure out a way to show that.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
When you guys look at the annual report, do you look at building that's going on in the surrounding area outside of here? Because that could have an effect on us.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I think the, sort of the most that we look at it is in those cohort cities and looking at just housing unit growth. But it would be interesting to see sort of, as I was going through it, I was kind of thinking about, you know, how housing variety might look different in different jurisdictions. It's not something that we looked at, but could definitely be interesting follow-up, I think.
Are you all aware if Metro does a housing report? I'd love to see that.
Thank you, Commissioner Willard. Metro does not do an annual housing report. And it's interesting when we, when it was suggested during our last housing needs analysis by Arkansas, which was actually also ECO Northwest. It was on the last call or the last presentation. We started looking around at, okay, so who does an annual housing report? What do they report out? Let's see if we can see what other jurisdictions do as a template or get ideas. We couldn't find any. And we were starting kind of, we were, I was honestly shocked at the time. And so we kind of just started from scratch of what data points would we want to track over time and trying to think about it that way. And it would probably be a really fun trip down memory lane for you to look at the first annual housing report. And I'm kind of ashamed of what it looks like in comparison to the beautiful things that my staff have now created. But we started bringing the data forward, which is the important thing, right? And you start somewhere and you learn from it. And this committee asks us wonderful questions that we then go back and say, oh, well, we could add that to the report next year. And so like even the cohort information was something that came from the Planning Commission. And we started reporting out about two or three years ago. So it gets better every year, which is the exciting part. And we start to report out more information. But in discussions with our partner cities, I actually still don't know anyone who is doing an annual housing report. And many are surprised and impressed with what we put forward every year. So it'd be difficult for us to actually do that in terms of tracking what other cities are producing or entitling because we don't have their permit data. A lot of cities are actually moving towards electronic permit systems. So hopefully, that will become more readily available in terms of like the applications and everything goes through. So it's easier to output reports. And then I will say that this will become something that will become much easier for us to actually report on once the state finishes the establishment of the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. So for those that aren't tracking and aware of this, back when House Bill 2003 was adopted in 2019, one of the recommendations was to study the option of doing a regional housing needs analysis because so many cities were behind on doing their housing needs analyses that are required under Goal 10. Part of that was because funding for the program was dropped. And so a lot of cities couldn't afford to do the work. But many were behind. And so when House Bill 2003 was adopted, it was acknowledged that they were behind. And could we study doing a regional housing needs analysis that would help to do that? And if so, how many regions across the state would do it? How would we assess that information? That turned into what became the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. And it would be, it's essentially a statewide program. That was passed to this session under, not to be confusing, House Bill 2001. So the 2021 version of House Bill 2001, not the 2019 version. And it encompassed a lot of housing initiatives and bills, and one of them being the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. So what it does, this was alluded to in the last presentation, it actually changes the methodology a bit from what was adopted back in the prior House Bill 2001. But because we've already started our housing needs analysis, we are able to continue on that track. And we will, because the methodology at the state isn't figured out yet either. So they're in the process of establishing all of the administrative rules for that and how that will actually play out for cities when they do their next housing needs analyses. But part of that will create... Correct. And it'll probably be slightly different in the metro region because we have slightly different data and information available to us being part of metro. So one of the things that will happen with that is the state will create a dashboard, statewide dashboard or report card so that we can, everyone in the state will be able to go to this website annually and see how cities are producing housing, the types of housing that is being built and, you know, how cities are meeting or working towards housing production targets the state will set. So this will become something that if we want to be able to see, well, how are we doing compared to our neighbors? Not just in terms of affordability, but in terms of like overall production or types of housing, that information will start to become available to us when the dashboard becomes active. And I believe the dashboard is, is it January 1, 2025? Do you remember, Dan?
That sounds right.
We've read a lot of bills this session. And a lot of them have been amended. But I believe it either become, I believe it's 2025. It might actually be 2024. So, but we'll keep you posted when that information does become available.
Cool. Thank you.
Sorry to be so long-winded about that. I also noticed I had the longest quote in the housing report.
There might be a theme there.
Yeah.
Just saying. Thank you.
Also, that's because Sarah's new. We'll have shorter quotes in the future.
What's that saying? I would have written a shorter letter if I had more time?
All right. So it looks like next up on the informational, city council action minutes, PC work program. No staff presentation for either. Any commentary from the team over there? For all of those not in attendance in person, that was a no.
Trying to be concise.
All right. Looks like we are done. So I probably need a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Looks like we got a second. We got a motion, we are adjourned, 7:38 PM. Thank you.